Mr. President, our first comment is from Walker Barnett. He's imploring you not to move forward with any plans for in-person instruction, even an attempted hybrid system. As a graduate of Carson High School and former classified employee of the district, I have some very grave concerns about the consequences this council faces if it decides not to proceed with online instruction this fall. First, I would like to know who's going to be financially responsible for all of the safety precautions that will be needed in the classrooms. For a school district that has had problems supplying its teachers with pencils and paper in the past, I find it unlikely that you will be acquiring all the necessary gear for keeping our children safe. So I ask you, will responsibility again fall on the teachers to purchase all of the necessary desk dividers, the endless amounts of hand sanitizer, and the countless face masks that will be needed? Furthermore, do you have the funds set aside to regularly test the students and staff, or will you allow the virus to run rampant through our schools before you're even aware of its presence? We've recently seen other sectors of industry with stringent testing measures still have to scale back their operations, and if you are not ready to test all students and staff on a near daily basis, then I fear you will be forced to close schools again anyways when the people who you are responsible for fall sick and die. Secondly, what is your plan to replace the instructors who decide not to go back to work? How many people will decide to find jobs elsewhere or even retire early instead of risk their well-being working for their school district? And if instructors do go back to work and fall ill, how many long-term subs do you have on standby to replace them during their weeks-long leave of absence? The district has long suffered from a shortage of substitute teachers, and I fear this is a problem that will only be exacerbated by COVID-19. Lastly, I hope you have a legal team on retainer, because if I were an instructor and forced back to work and fell ill, you bet your butt I would be suing for all of my medical expenses. On top of that, I can only imagine how large those personal injury settlements will be if anyone, student or staff, suffers any long-term health ramifications from your decision. These are only a small few of the dozens of problems you will face if you decide to move back to in-person instruction. If you can't readily answer these concerns now, then you have no right to be reopening schools in just a few short weeks. The next comment is from L. Doherty. How will online students with social needs in ESL be supported? And the second question is, how are we supporting working parents as far as childcare? A comment is from Robin Cato-Brong. The Health Department is going to be a big part of this. Do they have any recommendations based on data? For example, the number of cases in the CILICR ZIP code is 132 versus the cases in another ZIP code like Boarderwick Bray at 44. As we move forward, cases by school need to be evaluated and contract traced so that the community has the most current information available so that families can make informed decisions. Additionally, are you concerned with the number of employees and students that commute from other counties that have higher infection rates? Last year, 10% of my students commuted from Marshall because of the custody situations. I myself commute from Marshall County along with about 10% of other teachers at my school. Marshall County Health Department presented today a positivity rate that more than doubled the 100 cases per 100,000 population and recommended not reopening in person. I don't have a name for this comment, however, the comment is, if full online learning was launched and a lot of students would lose their face-to-face socialization with their peers and teachers, no matter how hard someone tries, talking to a screen will never have the same impact of talking to a real person, even if they distance. Everyone does better in person. This comment is from David Sorenson. I would like to see that teachers do not get reviews during this pandemic. It's not fair to them to teach both online and in the classroom. Why can't a teacher come to the house if the parents have disabilities to teach the child with special needs on an IEP if they have a mask on? How can we teach the parents with a disability which were on an IEP teach a special needs child who has an IEP, who is in high school at home? Does anyone know what the protocol will be when one of the teachers or students gets COVID? Will the whole class be quarantined for two weeks? The students' families, the whole school? Just curious as to how they are planning on dealing with that when it happens. This comment is from Jay Brown. Few thoughts and questions. Thoughts: Your recommendations for face shields is concerning. I currently work at the healthcare organization, and an office there allowed face shields and socially distancing to be an option. All employees in that office came down with COVID-19. Just a thought, not saying it is the cause of transmission, but it is something to keep in mind. Question: Are students able to be taught through a platform like Zoom where they are required to show up online at certain times and roll call is taken? Then teachers give lessons live and students get on-demand answers to their questions? Is there an ability to go online for the first semester for all students, then go hybrid in the following semester? This seems that you would be given more time to come up with a longer-term solution. Would classrooms be clean between students if there's an AM or PM class? One other question here. Again, Mr. Brown continues, as a healthcare professional, he is currently seeing patients who are positive who have no fever but have symptoms of the following: diarrhea, only positive for COVID; recurrent pink eye, positive for COVID; lethargy with no other symptoms, positive for COVID; and a sore throat, only, positive for COVID. Please remember, it is not temperature anymore that is the leading symptoms of COVID-19. This comment is from Loran Service. How will the middle school and high school kids do electives online such as photography, art, band, graphics design, web design, et cetera? Will the students have to come up with those kinds of electives if online? Pamela Schenk has a question. Has anyone thought of using employees who might not be in a fixed position as bust Debbie Bess, reviewing the draft of the parent intent letter, please remove the line under 100% online, only recommend four. There should be no influencing statements on either format. Parents should be able to choose what is best for their family without feeling bullied or guilted into one format or another. This comment is from Lisa Howard, an ESL teacher at Empire. Teachers need to know students are coming in with acceptable temperatures, period. This comment is from Tawny Judd, a teacher at Carson High School. I'm wondering how we can require students to get vaccinations for outdated diseases yet we are going to school during a global pandemic. That does not make sense. Getting a bruise, as Mr. Stokes said, and dying from COVID is not the same sort of risk that we should be taking. So as a teacher, if I suspect and get tested for COVID, I might have to wait and therefore self-quarantine for 10 to 14 days to get my results back. Who is teaching my class during this time? Will it be me at home? Will that 10 to 14 days come out of my sick leave? Does it count as the two weeks with the Families First Leave Act? What if I get sick and am sick for months? Will staff that contract COVID-19 get workman's comp? Will staff get additional sick days? If I have a fever in the morning, even if it's not COVID-related and I don't want to risk coming to school to spread it, staff will want to be more vigilant in monitoring their health and actually stay home when needed. But we might run out of sick leave faster than a regular year. And then what? We just come to school even if we run out of sick days? If we aren't going to get hazard pay, we should at least get some additional sick days. Is the district providing PPE for students and staff? When and how? I've literally had to bring in my own soap to the teacher's lounge, so I'm a little leery of depending on the school district to keep us as clean as they promise. I also just bought a $60 face shield out of my own pocket, and now apparently I can't even use it. How are we going to keep masks on three-year-olds or high schoolers who refuse to bend the rules? What do we do when students trade masks or drop them on the floor or lose them? Is anyone providing extra clean ones throughout the day? Who is going to be cleaning the touchpoints multiple times a day? Teachers, students, support staff? We really don't have enough custodians. You said Mondays were going to be prep day for teachers, but then you added on PLCs, meetings, student homework, engaging with students, preparing lessons for the asynchronous lessons, and I'm sure all of that is feasible, effective in one day. I'm pretty sure it's impossible to expect teachers to teach face-to-face and teach asynchronous classes at the same time, because that is what will be happening at the high school. Even though the class is asynchronous, I still have to be on the other end facilitating, answering questions, and responding to students, taking attendance, et cetera, while I'm teaching a class of 20. Hmm, how do I do that? In the event of an elementary school teacher calling out sick and not getting a sub, combining classes to have a class of 40 students is not social distancing. What are you going to do to get more subs? We are going to have an even worse shortage.
Mrs. Cortez, that's three minutes, so we'll include the remainder of the comments in our minutes.
Yes, sir. This comment is from Carol Ruff. She's wondering your plan for students in the CLS programs. How, excuse me, some of these students are medically fragile. Marcy Reiva, in reviewing the proposed calendar, it appears there are holidays on Wednesday or Friday. If children are on the Wednesday/Friday schedule, they will attend three less in-person school days, see October 30th, November 11th, and May 28th. Will those students attend school on a Monday, the weeks of the holidays, so that they have the same number of in-person days as the Tuesday/Thursday group? Lisa Howard, ESL Empire, is there any way that ESL can assist students who are ESL and test below 30% on MAPS to provide assistance instead of distance learning? By this, I mean that they attend four days a week. We help them as many of these families are unable to support what they need, that they attend four days. This comment is from Carson Barnett. As a child of former educator parents, I have to say that I think the decision to open a school district is appalling, dangerous, and one of the stupidest decisions to make. I'm thankful every day of my life that my parents have retired and are no longer educators, because if they were forced to go back to teaching and counseling right now, I would essentially be saying my final goodbyes to them. My mother and father have pre-existing conditions that make them more susceptible to this virus, and if they had to go back to teaching, it could very well be the end for them. I don't care how prepared you and the other school board members think the district is, it is not good enough. I have many friends who have educator parents and many friends of my parents who are still educators, and I am not ready to say goodbye to any of them. I cannot think that this will go any other way than students, parents, educators, and other staff members getting the virus and dying. It is not acceptable to have anybody die when it could have been prevented with social, excuse me, with distance education. If the schools reopen, is the school district ready to take financial responsibility for loss of life? I can't imagine any other outcome than legal action if teachers, children, and staff members get sick or die. Civil lawsuits of medical expenses and funeral costs are just the tip of the iceberg for consequences the school district will face. This is unacceptable. Please don't reopen the school district. This comment is from Andrew Ales. First, he would like to thank us for reading and considering the comments. Now, there's four points he'd like to consider. The first is probably obvious and repetitive. The novel coronavirus has been politicized. I have provided a few links below for your additional research into the reality of this virus, and will mention two things. First, the initial lockdown was based on Imperial College London's model that predicted 2.2 million deaths in the U.S. by September 1, 2020. And second, the number we predominantly hear in the news, new cases, is an irrelevant number. New deaths are the concern. There's a table below that shows that current new deaths on a weekly basis is at less than 5% of the peak in April, and that if you follow the link, you can see that only 6% of deaths are of COVID alone, and that on average, there are 2.6 comorbidities present. The second requires all reading or listening to pretend COVID does not exist. Clear your mind and imagine that it's budget time, and our new governor's first budget proposal demonstrates how he will save the state money by no longer building schools. Instead, we will implement an AB schedule where half of the children go to school Tuesday and Wednesday, and the other go on Thursday and Friday, and no one on Monday. Home days will implement technology for home learning. The governor will provide a plethora of studies showing how well children thrive in technological environments. My question is simple. Would you fight the governor's proposal? Or would you do what you are doing now and say, "The governor has spoken, and we have no choice but to follow what he decides is best"? Would you say your children need to go to school and interact? Yes, this is a different scenario than when we are facing, but in reality, that difference is mostly based on political opinion. To illustrate my point, the meeting on July 14 has a report called Carson City Safe Routes to School Master Plan draft that recommends that our community spend over $50 million to improve the safety of students on their way to school. That's quite a bit of money to spend to improve safety for children going to school. Going to school, is the board considering scrapping these proposals? This study and spending is not necessary if children don't really need to go to the schoolhouse. My third point is personal. I have four girls in the district. I would prefer that all four of my girls attend regular school five days a week without masks or any other preventative measures in place despite the fact that three of my girls are immunocompromised, two use inhalers. My youngest has been desocialized, but she has panic attacks with tears and curls into the fetal position when we had as few as three other children.
Mrs. Cortez, that's three minutes. We'll include the remainder in the minutes.
This comment is from Ryan Horff. I would like to encourage you all to watch the interview with Dr. Michael Ulsterholm, the Director of Infectious Disease and Research and Policy. A link was provided in the comment. Ten years ago, he predicted a coronavirus would come from China and turn our country upside down. He also anticipated the utterly irresponsible way in which the media would report on the situation, the completely opportunistic and shamelessly political way our leaders would likely react, and the unprecedented chaos and confusion that would arise from all the mixed messages from the medical community. His analysis of the situation is the most logical and persuasive of any I've heard so far. He is also the only expert I know who hasn't walked back his numbers, reconsidered his position, or moved the goalposts with regards to what we must do, what we can do, and what he expects to happen next. Dr. Ulsterholm publicly predicted in early March that we would conservatively see over 100 million COVID cases in this country with a very strong possibility of 480,000 fatalities, even if we successfully flattened the curve. 480,000 deaths is an obvious tragedy, and I'm deeply sympathetic to all who have been impacted thus far. I'm also very concerned for my parents and everyone else in a high-risk category. But when Dr. Ulsterholm says that COVID can be slowed but not stopped, I believe him. When he says a vaccine will not necessarily hasten herd immunity, I believe him. And when he says that people have confused flattening the curve with eliminating the virus, I believe him. I have accepted Dr. Ulsterholm's numbers, and I'm concerned, but I'm not petrified. And I believe returning to life as normal is the proper way to proceed, and the first step in doing so is returning our children to school full-time. This comment is from Ms. Pam Schenk, and she's a fifth-grade teacher at Fremont. She appreciates the difficult decision that is in front of the parents and the school district during this pandemic. She understands that education is first and foremost about the students we teach. I understand that parents need to work, which will mainly affect the elementary-level students who may have no other place to go when their parents go to work. I intentionally did not mention teachers in that opening sentence, because I do not feel that all teachers' concerns are being respected in this situation. At the previous school board meeting, there seemed to be more concern about teacher accountability, teacher evaluations, and the remote teaching that occurred when the shutdown was thrown at the teachers in the spring. Teachers were judged on the situation that was not planned for, could not be controlled, and students and teachers did not have a full bag of resources to meet all needs. Teachers did the best they could under the circumstances. I did not feel confident in what I was doing much of the time, and I was one of the lucky ones that had good attendance during my remote time with students. I did not feel that I was doing a great job, especially compared to what I could have done if I had been prepared for the situation. It is difficult to get engagement in a classroom and much more difficult during remote learning. As far as I know, there were no complaints about what I was doing, and I had several compliments from my parents. I think that most teachers are like me, and I am sure they had similar experiences. The only comparison made was that the first packets, which I created myself and were designed to best fit the makeup of my class, were superior to the one-size-fits-all packets that were distributed later and developed on keeping the learning opportunities fair. It has been proven that the one-size-fits-all education system does not level the playing field, and the only people who know how to fix this are the teachers who work directly with and know the students. Fair is not equitable. Teachers are very capable. I feel very disrespected that others with no experience or past experiences in the classroom seem to think they know better about students who they do not know and situations that they have never experienced. At a later date, when this pandemic is over and we are not focused on the health and safety of our students, I hope we can look into a requirement for school board members to teach in full-size classrooms for an extended period of time as substitute teachers. I think with the many important decisions the school board makes for teachers and students in the name of education, that they should be fully experienced in what goes on in the classroom and the decisions that teachers have to make constantly. I think this will aid in creating a mutual respect between the school board members and the teachers. If this is a proposal that I need to put forward at a later date, please pass the protocol on for that. I personally am not opposed to a hybrid model, except for the fact that this is causing...
Mrs. Cortez, that's three minutes. We'll include the remainder in the minutes.
This comment is from William Smith. Keep the schools closed and our children safe. Defund the police. Refund education. This is from a parent, Kason Kornmesser. Although I would love for my son to attend first grade five days a week, I understand under current circumstances that that is not possible. I'm in full support of the students being on a hybrid plan. If my son can only attend two days a week, that is better than at-home remote learning plan five days a week. I'm not sure how parents who have been told their children will be using an at-home remote learning plan for the fall semester can do this. My husband and I both work day shift. We both need to work. We are able to somewhat juggle our son learning from home three days a week, but we could not juggle being at home with him five days a week and assisting him with schoolwork. As it is, I am able to work remotely from home two days a week, but if I were to stick with the teleworking agreement, this is not supported, excuse me, is not supposed to be a childcare. I have spoken to my supervisor about my teleworking, and he only asks, "I work as much as possible when I'm working remotely from home." I also wanted to let you know how pleased I was to learn that the students would be utilizing online learning this time around. The packets that were released to the students during the last five weeks of the 2019/2020 school year were horrible. My primary reason for wanting to comment is to ask you to not consider a 100% teacher-led remote learning or online curriculum. Unless work sites change their rules to allow me to bring my son to work, there is no way my husband and I could make that work. I know I am not the only parent in this predicament. I know comments have been made about how some teachers are concerned about the children keeping their face masks on. Let me tell you how well my son, who is six, has adjusted to this current way of life. He has been attending summer camp, where it is mandatory they wear their face masks all day. He doesn't necessarily enjoy it, but he has become accustomed to it, as we all have. I support the proposed hybrid schedule for the 2021 fall semester. I hope come 2021, we will be able to go back to 100% full return to in-person instruction. This comment is from Mary Ann Giddens. She has two children in the district that attend at Boarderwick Bray. One will be entering second grade and the other scheduled to begin kindergarten. In the previous board meeting, there was discussion about obtaining full funding for full-time kindergarten, but based on the meeting agenda outline I reviewed prior to the meeting tonight, it indicates that kindergarten would be included in the same plan as all other elementary grades on the hybrid schedule and not on a separate plan. I find this very concerning, as I believe that kindergarten builds the roots for these children, the very beginning of their educational experience. I understand that as a parent, we have the greatest responsibility for our children. That said, at five years old, virtual learning will be nearly impossible to achieve. The smallest of our schoolchildren need to be in the classroom every day with the support of our teachers and be afforded a true opportunity to have a good and successful start to their education. Please do whatever possible to provide this to our kindergarten class. Please believe that this is a critical component and find the funding to make it possible. This comment is from Bonnie Preston. She would like to ask the school board to temporarily suspend all standard student attire uniforms in the four schools that still have them in place for the 2021 school year, or at the very least, ask the parents at those schools to take another online survey whether or not they still want uniforms through the COVID process. This year, parents voted on whether or not to keep their schools in uniforms. That was in January before COVID-19 hit the U.S., and now many families have different circumstances. Four schools in the district kept SSA. This can be an inequitable and unnecessary burden to families and teachers upon returning to school in person, even part-time. Second, these Second, these students have been and will be doing schoolwork in casual and plain clothes if we return in person. Then we are mandating that they dress up in their full uniform and lanyard and to keep things tucked in for just two or three days a week. Teachers at schools with SSA are expected to uphold the SSA guidelines all day on top of the COVID guidelines and try to have a positive relationship with the student. It would seem to be a reasonable request to focus on safety and remove the SSA challenges. If less than half of the district schools have SSA in place, how much of a need is SSA really? I understand this is only one facet to returning to school in person. This comment is from Mr. John Dunbar. First of all, he wants to thank everyone for their hard work and dedication to the community of young scholars and teachers and staff. You have a very difficult decision to make for the safety and well-being of all members of all the schools and our community. We, my family, have talked a lot about what we think regarding everything surrounding COVID-19 as a businessman, as a teacher, as what's best for our family and two small children. We have some questions that hopefully you also have thought of and are discussing and planning protocol for. But if not, please, how will these items be addressed? If my wife, a second-grade teacher at Borderwick Bray, contracts COVID-19, where do the sick days come from? What about the kids and their sick days or absences allowed by the district and the state? Does she have to quarantine if a student gets COVID? The class? Both cohorts for hybrid learning? Does our family all have to quarantine? Does the whole school have to quarantine? Or if one of my kids gets COVID, does my wife and both my kids have to quarantine? Who pays the medical bills for COVID-related issues? Is it a worker's comp issue? Is there any money for hazardous pay? Working with potential sick kids and all the chemicals going to be used for cleaning and sanitizing? What about an in-person teaching option or opt for teaching remotely only? Who pays for the PPE supplies? And which company will be providing the PPE supplies? Is this going to be a 9/11 moment, when the first responders died 10 years later from cancer after breathing in all the dust? The teachers and students are going to breathe in all the fogging residue and extra chemicals used for cleaning and sterilizing. The CDC states transmitting COVID on harsh surfaces is rare, so why are they suggesting fogging? What is the fogging chemicals? Are there HEPA filters in the air system? Do you have peer-reviewed research backing the safety and effectiveness of the fogging chemicals? What is the liability of the teacher if she infects a student and the parent sue? What physical and mental-emotional support will be offered to teachers and students? Some suggestions we have, thought of based on readings from many other states and countries and past protocols used in classes. Teachers should not be required to be physically present at schools unless students are in class. They should have access to resources in their schools and classrooms, though. Students should be responsible for cleaning their own desks and classrooms. It is a good task to learn responsibility. We know schools offer so much more than academics and testings. We are building character of the future citizens of our community. We believe the best split of AB schedule would be a week on and a week off.
Cortez, that is three minutes. We'll include the remainder in the minutes.
This comment is from Jennifer Robinson. She's writing, "As a concerned parent, teacher, and citizen in regards to the proposed upcoming plans for reopening schools. Let me begin by stating that I agree with the statements that students need to be in school. They, however, need to be in a healthy and safe environment to learn and grow. It is heartbreaking on many levels that this global pandemic has taken, what this global pandemic has taken from these students. With that being said, now is not the time for students to be returning to school in a face-to-face capacity. How are we even having a discussion of sending students and staff back? How can it be justified in any way to send thousands of people to school to be exposed to this horrific virus, especially when it is absolutely unnecessary to do so?" The one thing that you constantly hear from those that survive or those who are lucky enough to survive is that it is awful, to say the least. They literally beg people to wear a mask or even better, to stay home. This virus lingers. It is painful. It is debilitating and can cause permanent damage. Nick Cordero was a healthy 40-year-old Broadway star. He went into the hospital thinking he had pneumonia. He ended up with COVID-19, was put in ICU, induced into a coma, had a pacemaker, holes eaten into his lungs, his leg amputated, spent 95 days in the hospital ICU, and then succumbed to the virus. Why should we risk anyone or an entire community being exposed to it? There are also many questions involved with returning that cannot be answered. There are few procedures and protocols finalized in place, so how can we return to school once a plan is selected? These questions have been circulating, and there are no answers. They are brushed under the rug because they are the harsh reality of what we need to be looking at. Some of these questions include: What happens when, not if, because we all know it's going to happen, someone contracts the virus? Who gets quarantined in this situation? The student? The teacher? The class? The grade level? The school? Who's going to pay for the testing of these people? We are already in a deficit. Where is that money coming from? Will the teacher be paid for being quarantined? It isn't their fault that they had to be removed from the school. They should not be charged sick time for being in this situation. What support and help is available for pregnant and high-risk health teachers? What is the answer going to be when a pregnant teacher has their child immediately taken away because of the possible COVID exposure? How are we going to social distance students? How are you really, truly going to distance them? Elementary school kids are young. How are we going to enforce masks? The second you have a student remove their mask or sneeze, it is over. If they are allowed to recess, who sanitizes the-
Cortez, that's three minutes. We'll include the remainder of the comments in our minutes.
Mr. President, let me see if I have anything else added in the emails since we started.
While you're looking, I had somebody text me that they wanted a follow-up, or they just wanted something clarified that maybe staff could follow up with. So, Marlene Maffay, "I'm wanting to clarify that students will receive a take-home lunch on their in-person day and their stay-at-home, for their stay-at-home day." So basically, if they come on Monday, will they get a lunch for Tuesday? Also, what happens for students that attend on Friday and don't return until Wednesday? How are they being covered Monday and Tuesday? So maybe we could follow up with Marlene.
The next comment is from Kelly Williams. "Is there a reason why the teacher instruction can't happen in two different manners at the same time? One, in-classroom instruction, and two, distance learning via live stream, maybe through Google Classroom if possible? Both options would happen concurrently, so those that chose to stay home for distance learning would benefit from the same instruction at the same time as the students participating in the classroom." This comment is from Jessica Dunbar, and she's a second-grade teacher at Borderwick Bray. "First of all, thank you for the hard work and hard discussions that you're having to reopen schools and learning for students. This is not an easy task, and there's no right way. But I appreciate all the hard work, and I appreciate the openness for families and teachers that want to stay home to continue their learning and teaching as an option, and also for the families and teachers that want to be back at the schools. My question regarding the hybrid model is, have you considered moving the remote day for all to Wednesday instead of Monday? My thought on this is that it would allow two consecutive days together with your classmates and teachers, creating community and having more fluidity for projects. And then Wednesday, being the remote for all students and teacher planning, really would allow for a good deep cleaning, sanitizing. And then the next cohort coming, Thursday and Friday. So again, two full days together, building community and keeping up with academics. Please consider this option for the staff and families that do not want, that want to return to the classroom for teaching." This comment is from Alyssa Goldsworthy. She's an ASL interpreter for the district. "Since masks will be required to be worn by all staff and students, will the district be providing clear face masks for the deaf and hard-of-hearing students? 75% of the American Sign Language is facial grammar, which cannot be assessed when wearing a cloth face mask. There are several deaf and hard-of-hearing students that rely, excuse me, that rely in interpreted education in our district as per their IEP. If that interpretation cannot be provided adequately, for example, being marred by a full fabric face mask, that is a district violation of the student's IEP. Will the deaf and hard-of-hearing staff be expected to purchase clear masks for themselves as well as their students?" That's all I have at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have any further telephone comments?
We have additional comments. Sean Sever, you are unmuted. Please identify yourself for the record.
Sean, bottom left-hand corner should be a little microphone.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I could hear you, Sean. Good evening.
Okay. My name is Sean Sever, and I really want to just say I appreciate the school board's time and diligence in this matter. I think you're making a great decision with the hybrid approach. It makes, it has a lot of common sense to it, and you have a backup if there is a problem. I work for the DMV, and we came back to work over a month ago. We've practiced social distancing and worn masks, and we have 15 cases out of 1,300 employees statewide, and that includes Las Vegas, which is a hotspot. Carson City is not a hotspot. And then when you throw in younger people, it gets even lower. There's been four deaths in Carson City from COVID, and that's out of a 60,000-person population. And I just, I just believe kids need to be in school in person to learn. They are suffering from staying at home all summer and part of last year, and I just want to thank you for doing the best you can. You're balancing the needs of the community, and I applaud your decision. As far as some of the comments that have been made, the zillions of questions you're going to get, the answer to every one of them is you figure it out. The students figure it out, the teachers figure it out as you go along. And as far as the teachers making comments about getting infected, being concerned, think about working in a grocery store or a hospital. So anyway, I just wanted to thank you for your time. I'm sorry it's so late tonight, and I appreciate everything that you're doing for our kids.
Thank you. We appreciate your feedback.
Seen no other comments online?
All right, so I'll open up to the trustees. Follow-up questions, this is a possible action item. Richard, and then Stacy.
This is probably a minor point after all the comments that we've heard tonight, and thank everybody for calling in and sending their comments in. We are taking them into consideration, and we all know this is not normal times, and we're going to try to make the best decision that we can for the community, kids, students, teachers, et cetera. But my question is, like I said, is my question, on the absent days, you know, the AV days, what about testing? If a kid takes a test on A-day, could they give the answers to the kid who takes the same test on B-day?
They already have the block at the high school. That's already, the teachers have figured out how to work that out at the high school because they've been on the block for years.
Tesh, a few something for the record. Typically, in a block schedule like Carson High has, many teachers do different versions of the same test. So version A will be given on one day and version B on the next day, so that there's not just a passover of answers.
So, looking at the hybrid schedule with the Group 1, Group 2, is, are we adding more work to the teachers by having this hybrid schedule versus the 100% online?
So, the intent, again, going back to the model of instruction, being that of a flipped model, that model can be applied to both a 100% remote learning as well as the hybrid schedule. So again, the intent is, as the teacher, instead of being in front of the students doing a lecture or what we probably all experienced when we were in school, it's more about the teacher putting resources where the student might be watching a recorded bus and it might be watching, you know, something on Khan Academy or some kind of interactive piece to get the initial exposure to the curriculum. Then the next day, that is the actual in-person day, whether it's on Google Meets for a remote learner, you know, who's 100% remote learner, or in-person for that student, that is where you have the discussion, the dialogue, again, the hands-on learning piece that goes along with what that lecture or the initial learning was. So if we use and employ that model for our students, then I think that's been a proven model for distance education. It's also a model that they use at the colleges a lot now. You know, many classes have, for instance, their lab classes that you go into or discussion or tutorial. So I think that's, that's the intent for our instruction, our instructional model for K-8. And again, at the high school level, they do have separate, purely separate online curriculum that is 100% of what they're doing if you're 100% remote learner.
That still doesn't answer my question. Is it more work? Is there more time? Is it going to take the teachers more time?
Well, okay, so that, thank you, to get back to that. That's the reason why we actually came up with the Monday. I guess that's the answer that you're looking for, the Monday. So most of our teachers, in a traditional schedule, teacher still has a prep period, right, during the regularly scheduled day. So we've not removed teacher prep periods in the Tuesday through Thursday. They will still have their prep period to do your traditional planning, preparation, grading, grading papers, that kind of thing. On the Monday, the intent of having the homeroom in the morning is one, so that we can address some social, emotional learning topics, as well as make sure that we have contact with students to get their week off to a good start. But then the after, the afternoon part of that is to give teachers team planning time. We do know it's going to take more time on behalf of a teacher to prepare for that flipped model. So again, it's not that a teacher, I know some of the comments were, and that's where my mind was going, I have to teach the way I normally teach, and now I have to also teach this way, and I have to do them at the same time. That's not correct. The way you are teaching is different. So the time, the time, that's what I meant by whether they're remote or hybrid, it's the same lesson plan. You're writing one lesson plan, but what is going to take additional time for our teachers is researching those online resources. So the Department of Education has done a great job of purchasing additional resources for districts to use throughout the state, as well as identifying and researching additional resources, as well as our, our team in-house that has additionally researched more resources for our teachers. But it still takes time to sift through that. So if I'm writing a lesson plan on gravity, you know, I might have to watch a couple videos as a teacher to identify the ones that I think are going to be best for my students to watch at home. So we know it's going to take a little more time, but I'm not writing two separate lesson plans and teaching two separate ways at the same time. Does that make sense? Again, in a flipped model, you're doing one lesson, but your instruction looks different than it traditionally has.
AJ, do we have all the PPE and things purchased and ready to go for this 24th?
Trustee Wilkie, we have many items well in stock. We have many items on order, and we have many items that are going to be on order. Much of, again, the city offered us some of their CARES funding, so we're using that to purchase literally tens of thousands of gloves, tens of thousands of masks, all sorts of chemical cleaning, disinfectant, dispersment products, the cleaning products themselves. There is, yeah, I mean, there- There is, yeah, I, I mean, there, there's a lot. The warehouse is full, hand sanitizer, all those sorts of things. And, and really, the, the larger plan that, I think, a lot of the work between Ansier and Mark Kornick, working together to look at what is necessary for the schools and, and planning ahead, I mean, those sorts of things are, they're kind of in place as far as what our needs are going to be. They've taken stock of what we have around the district, even within, you know, nurses' offices and things like that, so.
So, just for clarification for the public, can you explain the CARES money that we're getting from? The city is not coming from our budget? It's not like a grant?
Correct. So, so the city, they, they received as a part of their CARES funds, just like we receive funds, our, our funds are restricted in, in different ways and how they're used. The city's CARES funds have their own, they receive ten million dollars, but have their own restrictions. But one of the several ways they can use them, one is to help support distance education within their community, and the other is just basically anything along the lines of helping reduce the spread of COVID. So, a lot of these cleaning supplies and sorts of things that they graciously reached out, and from my understanding, the board of supervisors made clear at the first meeting that the school district was a priority. There's, there's a lot of concern with, with the city leaders. So, they reached out immediately, their CFO to us and the mayor. So, we went through that process and internally looking at what we have, what we needed more support with, more help with, and, and really along the lines of cleaning supplies, facilities, looking at the, like, the heating and air conditioning systems, and that came up, I think, in some of the comment, getting fresh air. I mean, we, we have contracted with this company, Mr. Spoke spoke, spoke about trying to look at how to best take care of the indoor air quality with all the concerns that, that come with that. So, quite a bit of thought and, and time has gone into this, and really great partnership we have, you know, with the city, city leaders to look out for us as they have here.
Joe.
Tasha, just one of the comments that came up, and I was, I was rattling around in my head as well, and I, I figured you'd be able to speak to it, was the whole idea of live, if we go to a hybrid model, the whole idea of students who are remote being able to tune in and learn the same lesson that the kids in the class are getting. What's the challenges with that? Knowing one of them is certainly the amount of time you're going to be at home trying to focus on a computer.
Correct. That was one of the, the issues, is we really, in a hybrid model or even in a remote learning model, the intent is not to have a student sitting in front of a computer screen, looking at it for seven hours a day. We all know what that's like in our world of working with technology. So, it, it's not, I don't, I don't think that's an expectation we want to put out there. Two, I think from an instructional perspective, that would be truly difficult for our teachers. So, I'm dealing with the students who are sitting in front of me, as well as trying to man an online platform, answer questions remotely, as well as answering questions in person, and trying to make sure, and hopefully, that my technology's working that day because everything's live. And then, and then, you know, juggling that. We already tell our teachers, and, and Mr. Rose says this too, that, you know, it's like you're always having to come up with a backup plan. If the tech doesn't work that day on the fly, you got to have a plan to, to, to go with. So, it just, it's not a best practice model for delivering remote instruction or for delivering in a blended learning model. I've not seen any model out there that's ever recommended doing that kind of an approach where I'm going to videotape a teacher doing a lecture and have it watched at home and in person. All the research that we've done in terms of the most effective models have been the flipped model, the flipped classroom model. So, that is what we want to be able to train effectively our educators on how to do and how to, to implement that effectively this year, so that we get away from those wonderful packets that one of the other comments was about.
I appreciate that. I mean, thank you. I, I had some of the same thoughts, but I wanted to make sure I was, my brain was rattling in the right direction.
Just a comment I have, reviewing in greater detail the parent intent form, and the, and the comment that mentioned under full-time online learning, and is it that we are only recommending that for students who have known medical issues or family members, or is that going to be something that's available for family choice, of a better word? Is there, is there any way we can maybe?
So, we can remove that, but the statement about it being recommended is it's, it doesn't say it's only available to parents.
Okay.
We are recognizing the fact that most of the, the experts in the field of pediatricians, et cetera, have talked about how really desperately important it is for our students to get back into school and to be around their peers for, for socialization purposes, for social, emotional learning, et cetera. And obviously, for folks who want to, to remote educate their children, absolutely that's available, but we didn't want it to be communicated that we, as a district entity, are advocating for parents to do one-hundred percent remote learning. That's your choice.
Okay.
But what best practices or what the research is telling us is that it's important for students to come back and see, unless there's a reason for them to not be there, and we respect that.
Okay. And then my next question or comment on that would just be where the parents are initially, and maybe if we could add some more specifics in there, like if they've had a fever, a hundred point four or greater, because I know sometimes I'm even like ninety-nine point eight, is this, you know, where, where is it? So, just so we, we can give that, and then maybe include some of the other symptoms because some of the research is indicating that children often have vomiting and gastrointestinal symptoms more so than a fever. So, maybe list those things, sore throat, runny nose, cough, those type of things that, you know, come back. If, if, and if it turns out that you have allergies that are causing you to have a runny nose, maybe they could get a note from the teacher, but maybe a few more of those symptoms on the line.
Go ahead, Lupe.
Tasha, just for clarification, for Spanish-speaking families that are listening, for the days that their students are going to be attending school at home, will there be a bilingual staff member that will be providing the parents instructions of how to, how the students will be performing their work at home?
So, EL services will continue in the new model, meaning we do have our EL paraprofessionals and our EL teachers. There is, currently, Dr. Austin, her team are looking at other resources for bilingual learners that could be utilized in a remote learning environment as well. We will do our best, as we did last year, to try to provide parents directions whenever possible to help their children at home. But I do know right now what we're really looking at is making sure that we can continue to provide the services that are outlined in their individualized learning education plans or language education plans, their ILEPS. So, for instance, our second language learners who are level one, two, or three do require a separate lesson in language, a language development lesson. That perhaps is actually, you know, something that could be done on, on Monday. So, when we were talking about what will teachers be doing on that, that homeroom Monday, that type of service could be provided on that Monday. So, we are looking to, working with the guidance from the state on how we provide services to our English language learners, and then, in most cases, we've exceeded those recommendations, and we'll continue to look for all those additional ways that we can help our parents help our students. That's a good segue, and actually, thank you for bringing that up, trustee Ramirez, because the other intent that we're really focusing on this year is providing professional learning for our parents. You know, our parents have said in the past, during the last quarter, that they often didn't know how to help their students. So, one of the things that we've committed to is to providing parent training. Typically, the classes will either be something that they can watch, like a webinar on certain topics, if they want to learn how to use Google Classroom or Google Meets, and/or synchronistic, synchronous learning opportunities through, like Zoom. So, we are having that planned. And a couple of other things on this side, we, we have looked at different tools to help our families. So, for instance, we're going to be looking at Parent Score as a parent communication tool. I know trustee Crossman, he brought that up, that many parents said we have three different parent communication tools, we need something streamlined. So, we as a district have looked at identifying those very specific tools, and that we will train all of our teachers on those tools, and it will be one tool, like Parent Score for parent communication, and then we'll provide training for our parents too. So, and we'll do that also in Spanish.
I appreciate that. I also like to make a recommendation for our families who do not have a computer at home to consider investing in a computer. I know that the school district is going to provide the, the families with a Chromebook, but oftentimes, the families have, you know, children that do need to use more than one computer. So, I like to make a recommendation, you know, that our families, if, if possible, because I know that right now we're in a tight budget, but if possible, to consider purchasing an additional computer to make it work for, for the entire family.
So, one thing we can report on is that we have purchased enough Chromebooks for all of students K, K twelve in our district. We are actually in possession of those Chromebooks, which is an important thing because many districts are trying to buy them, and they're in back order until October, November. So, we do have them in our possession, and we will be giving a Chromebook to every student K twelve in our district. So, if there's five children in one household, all five children will have a separate Chromebook.
You know, I think that when I think about this, it's a real challenging topic because really, I think that probably, it really is fifty-fifty. I think a lot of people are counting on the schools for their kids. Education is soup, not just the education, but also the social, emotional aspects of it. And so, with so much conflicting information, I've been really thinking about this over the past several weeks, and, you know, I just decided I need to approach it like I have all the other tough topics that we've approached as I've been on the board, and I think it's what's good for kids. And when you look at our community, we have, you know, low number of people infected right now in Carson City, looking at the plan and working with our staff. I know that we have a real thoughtful plan to keep our students and our staff safe. And as a trustee of this community, we need to get our economy going also, and these families need to work. And part of that is, you know, we need to start getting these kids back in school, and we need to get ramped up so that when things get better, and I stress the word win because they will get better, we're ready to go back in. And I think that our options right now, you know, to get these kids in school is a hybrid model. We can't, you know, I know that there's a lot of parents who are telling us ignore what the governor says, and don't listen to X, Y, and Z because it's not real, and open the doors and send all the kids to school. Even if we believed that, we don't have that availability. We can't do that. We're under emergency orders in this state, and we're required to follow those as a government agency. And so, I think that we really need to think about this, and a hybrid model is probably the best first step to get these kids back in school. And I know it's going to be unpopular. Don?
I agree with you. I, I think the hybrid approach is common sense, it's reasonable. I just wish COVID was cooperating with us.
Don't we all?
It's ticking up. It's, it's going up in Carson, it's going up in Washoe. I think we're, I know we've made comments that we're separate, we're not separate. There's hundreds of people, including myself, that go back and forth every day. People go to shop in Reno. There's a lot more coming this way to the state every day. For me, I just think the health and safety take precedent over all of these reasonable things, and I think we need to go remote.
Mike, I, I think, I think what you're going to find on the board is we're no different than everybody else. We're, you know, I, I think, you know, if we're not fifty-fifty, we might be close, but it's because there's good, there's, there's good discussion that support both sides. I, I, there's no doubt in my mind that getting these kids back in school is the best thing in terms of education. I mean, if remote learning was great, we probably all would have went remote learning years ago. But the fact is, we do have health issues that are going on. Numbers are growing. The kids, I'm certainly concerned about their, their safety and their education, but from what I understand, as much of the data, even scientific data that we read, you know, it's tough to, you know, what's right, because for every, even scientific argument I read about one side, ten minutes later, I can read another argument from a reliable source on the other side. So, then I start looking at, yes, we have, we have a priority to, to help these kids, but we also have a priority to our staff. And I'm just, I'm, I'm still struggling with our inability to find a reasonable way we can be proactive to protect our staff. And that's what I'm dealing with. I mean, every, every thirty seconds, I lean a different direction, so I'm, you know, I'm torn down the middle here. It's a tough decision. I really want to say I appreciate all the emails and the comments and the texts I've received from teachers, staff, and community members. Most have been very reasonable, well-thought-out. Some have been, quite honestly, a little mean. I think some people do more research than others, but we're, right now, we're in a, we're in a society where most people feel whatever their point is, they're on the right side of things, and if you don't agree with them, you're on the wrong side of things. And I just don't think that's a healthy place to be. So, I want to thank everybody for their input. I really appreciate all of it. And not that it makes our decision any easier, I think what people are seeing is people are on both sides of this issue, and it's tough to figure out what the best answer is. Everything's going to come with a ramification. And I don't want to rattle anymore, but I do think we have some concerns that are very challenging for us to tackle, and we are a, certainly one of the largest employers in the state of Nevada, if not the northern state, I should say. You know, we've got the state employees, but we employ a fair amount of people, and our buildings occupy a lot of our citizens. And so, I really think that the education's important, but the safety is a, is equal to it. And I'll stop there for now.
I, I appreciate all the work that has gone into this, and I, I know that there will be complaints about whatever we decide, but I do really, I, I think that the hybrid model with implementations, with the current requiring masks for everyone, with the social distancing, with limiting the number of, of kids that are in the building, and, and hopefully, you know, containing it to a smaller group of kids, I, I think that that provides a mitigated risk of, of transmission that's being recommended in every other place of business that has been open, some throughout this entire time, that have required masks and, and have required those type of things. I, I'm concerned about the safety of the kids when they're not in school. I'm concerned about their mental and not just so, I, I, I'm concerned about them with the lack of school for the kids. When I talked to my pediatrician, she had not admitted anyone for respiratory illness since April, but she's admitted two suicide attempts, and I'm concerned about the kids having this, having go for full remote and, and having that continued. And I, I understand it's stressful on everyone, but those, those are things that worry me if we were to go full remote. I also, I, I like the hybrid model, and I understand that our situation could change based on the cases that are here, but I like the opportunity that the hybrid gives students to make that contact with their teachers, so that then if we are in a situation where full remote becomes what is mandated, I think the kids are going to have more success in that, having already established a relationship with teachers, having teachers know who those kids are. I, I think this gives us that chance to make, and, and I, for, for me, it comes down to what is best for the kids. I, I can look at it and go, yeah, this, there's so many logistical nightmares about trying to put together this hybrid formula and the scheduling that the school sites are going to have to do. And, but I still come back to, I think it's best for the kids to be in, in the school, even if it's only two days a week, just to, to, to have that learning experience, to have that opportunity to develop the relationship. to have that learning experience, to have that opportunity to develop the relationships with the teachers. And I, and I think it's better for them safety-wise as well, to have that social, emotional, educational foundation that they need. And there's, I worry about the kids that are in home, that have been in remote learning during this time, that are not in safe homes. And they don't have that safe net to go to. I worry about the kids that, we didn't have cases of child abuse being reported because it wasn't being picked up at school. So, to me, this is, and, and I, I think this is the best step to take. If, if everything changes and we have to go full remote, I think we're in a place to do it. But I think this gets us, I think going hybrid gets us better for the kids and better prepared for whatever way it goes in later on. So.
Thank you. Richard?
I agree with a lot of the comments. I agree with Don's concerns about the COVID cases. But I think what we're looking at tonight, we have three different options actually that we're presenting to parents. We have the hybrid model where they can come to school a couple of days a week. If a parent chooses to have their kid not come to school, they have the option of online training, I mean, online teaching, and then also the remote learning option. So actually, we're providing three different options to people, even though we may be in favor of the hybrid model. I don't know what to do or how to alleviate the concerns of the teachers, because there has been a lot of concerns expressed about them being exposed. And some teachers are legitimately immune compromised, and I think they have a great concern about, you know, their health. So I think that's kind of what I'm kind of struggling with, is how do we address their concerns? And I think that, you know, you put a very good plan together with the sanitation, and I think we're trying to mitigate the best we can. But I wish I had a better answer for the teachers that have expressed concerns about their health. And I don't know what, I don't know what to do. And I don't think any of us probably really know how to address that. But I do appreciate the work you put into this plan. I know there was some criticism about having a three-page plan before. This one, I think, is very comprehensive. I appreciate the fact that you put a lot of the frequently asked questions down and answers to those. I think that's going to help. And how, are we going to distribute those to all the parents, those, those questions and answers?
Thank you, Trustee Varner. Yes, those things will be available, all of this material that you have, and then plus others, we will put on our webpage. The goal, depending on the outcome, to get the word out to the community is to use all of those electronic and print means that we have at our disposal to put the information out. And, and as we have in the past, just answer questions that are coming in. And we know that we'll be meeting with our principals as school starts and trying to make sure that they have the information that will, will be needed going forward, because that's where the majority of our people feel the most comfortable going to their community schools. And they've made those relationships at that level. So that'll be an important piece for us as well.
And I'd also like to tell the community that this is a very difficult decision. It's difficult for me, because I have a wife who's a teacher, and four grandkids are, who are in the school system. And so, whatever decision we make tonight, it's going to affect them and potentially myself also. So just ask for everybody's cooperation and understanding in the decision that's going to be made.
You know, Trustee Varner, and I think we'd be doing a disservice. I think, I know for me, I've heard from a lot more staff members who are in favor of going back to school. There are, I've heard from some who have health concerns and they're legitimate. But I've heard from many employees in the district who are, are wanting to go back in and looking forward to kind of putting boots back on the ground in the schools. And so, I mean, and it's, it's not even 50/50 from my experience. I've had a couple people talk to me about health concerns. Almost all the staff members that I've talked to are wanting to go. But I have heard some things. So, I mean, I get it, but I don't think, I think when you sum everybody up from what we're getting, it does feel like it's 50/50. But of the teachers I've talked to, I mean, I feel like we have a lot of teachers who, and staff members, who are looking forward to getting back to work. And so, I mean, I don't know. I don't know what we do with that, but I'm, I'm just saying, it's not all teachers are saying, I'm afraid to go back to work. I think it's much more saying, let's do this, that are saying, we don't want to do this.
No, I, I agree. And if I gave that impression, I apologize. But what I was talking about is that the teachers who have expressed concerns about their potential health effects. Not everybody, and you're right, not everybody has expressed that. But I wanted to at least recognize that these teachers, I think, do have legitimate concerns.
Well, and I think that, I mean, I know that that's one of the things that Mr. Stokes and our Human Resources Department will be working with, those individuals, as we identify the students who are requesting remote learning or online learning. And, you know, that, that'll be the next step once we kind of set up our plan.
I would just like to express my appreciation to the committee, to all those individuals who served on the committee. And I know we have representatives from the, from the trustees, so thank you. I can only imagine how much work you guys put into this. So it's going to be hard to please everyone, but I know that we are trying to make the best decision, like Trustee Crossman said, for the best of the children. So in addition to that, I, I also want to let the teachers know that I work at WNC, and I felt the same way. When we opened the doors to taking person appointments, I was, I was scared. I was concerned. But, you know, after a few days, you start feeling, you know, that you're doing your best and that your clients are doing their best, their best also to stay, you know, safe. So I think it's just, you know, it is, it is terrified at first, but I think, you know, you realize that, you know, we need to conduct business as best as we possibly can, as long as we all work together. And I also like to thank Mr. Stokes for, for being very supportive, extremely supportive of the idea of doing this agenda item in bilingual English and Spanish for our Spanish-speaking families. So thank you so much. And I thank Letitia Servin, who is a translator. Really appreciate you guys.
So, this is for possible action, and we will need, oh, we, I forgot about you after your soliloquy.
Yeah.
Stacy.
That's right. Don't do that under these circumstances, huh? Oh, I just wanted to put in my two cents, but, and I can't keep on this mask, so this could be fun. I'm sticking my tongue out, but you can't see. First of all, like all of you, we all have our concerns. We had the committee together. We did it for a month. I still worry about either the hybrid or the online. We have daycare issues for families. We have the isolation issues. We have the equity issue with, with both of those models. I mean, if we could put our schools in a bubble, and we would open them up the way we all want to open up and have everybody safe. I'm extremely worried that we still don't know where this virus is going. It's going up, like Don said. I, I have a real, I might, I lay it with, for the people at home that don't think that we're taking this serious and that we haven't, that we care just about the money, I have to tell you, none of us are here for the money. We've never been here for the money. But we do have to look at finances, and that's one of those things that, that trustees have to do. But all of us are cringing over having to make any of this decision. And I am so grateful to have six other board members that are looking at this as serious as, as I am, and that we are all looking at it different ways. And like Joe, I waffle back and forth. I really, the thought of getting a superintendent's report that says we've had a death, whether it's a family, or a staff member, or a staff member's family member because of this, keeps me up at night sometimes. And it's been really hard that way. Because I, I know people now that have had COVID. Of course, they're in California. They're not here. And then I also have a cousin who they opened up, she works for a private school in Arizona, and they opened up theirs where they're full-time. Everybody's coming to school full-time. They're wearing masks. They're having recess. And they don't, they don't have that problem. So I, I kinda, and this is probably the way I've always been, though, kind of like to see, do the online distancing for now, and see how everybody else opens up, and if the virus takes over from that point of view. And then maybe go into the hybrid model, is what I'd kind of like to see. But I know that that's not, the board is probably going a different way, and I will support that model, and I will be helpful in all of that. And we know that they can get it anywhere. I mean, I'm in Home Depot because of my job, two or three times a day, Home Depot and Lowe's, and sometimes Walmart. So I, I could have just as much potential exposure to it doing those than to going to schools. But I still just worry about my neighbors going and teaching at school and having their kids in the school, and then having somebody get seriously ill and die. So I'm kind of like trying to take a wait and see how Lions Week On, Week Off goes, if they have a rise, or if Washoe with their elementary program works having them there full-time. I'm just, I'm really on the fence, and that's why I feel very blessed to have six other members that are helping us make this decision, because you know that the best decision for the kids is going to come out of this group, and with the staff's support, and all of, and the committee, the staff. Mr. Stokes, he must be working 15 or 16 hours a day working on this, and we appreciate that. Mr. Delfin is on vacation, and he answered my email at 10 o'clock at night. So there's no lack of, of people looking for solutions and trying to figure this out. So I'm, that's how I'm leaning, and I'm just grateful for all of you to be here with us.
Can I be real quick? In the public comment, I just, I guess I wonder about this, so I want to, it's going to go to you, Ryan, here. What is our liability? We had some public comment. I think they were, possibly even a staff member, they're already suing us. What, what is our liability?
That's a good question. So before the, the meeting started, I was asked the question about whether any of the, the statements about being able to resist the governor are, are true, or whether the governor actually has the authority to, to do what he has done through this. And my answer to that is yes. He's completely vested with power through the Nevada Constitution and then Nevada revised statute to direct the, to direct and manage the activity of people within the state during a, a period of crisis. And what this board has done, through Mr. Stokes as well, is comply very, very strictly with all of the governor's mandates. And so, complying with the law and proceeding pursuant to the law is the best protection that you can have against potential liability. And right, right now, the law is obviously changing a little bit. There was a new directive tonight, but there's also a directive directing attempts at reopening. And so that's what you guys are discussing and trying to do. There's nothing you can do that can stop people from suing you. What you want to do is have the best defense. I think your compliance is a very good defense. I think all the COVID protocols that are built into the plan, whichever option you pick, are a good defense. I think your, your back-to-school paperwork or new student paperwork will likely have language about the risks that are attendant to the decisions, those risks and releases, and choices to come to work are also a good defense. So I can't, I can't tell you that there's anything I could do to make people not sue. But I think what you guys have done has been very, very in line with the law, and that's a great defense.
So I guess I'll open it up for the board's pleasure. This is a possible action item.
I'll move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the superintendent's school reopening plan for the 2021 school year as submitted. Should I include in that some direction to look into the newer mandates with the lesser, with the three-feet social distancing and, and to be considered?
Yeah, if, well, you can make your motion, whatever you want it to be. But what we discussed earlier was given the superintendent direction, or conditioning that motion on the superintendent having the, the ability to amend the, the plan to comply with Directive 28 and any others that may come out before he submits.
Okay. Can I, okay, so I'll make that motion, and then include with that the directive for the superintendent to amend the reopening plan to comply with Directive 28 or any other future directives. Is that too broad?
Nope. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Well, Joe, would you like to assume the, leading the meeting, and I'll be happy to second that motion?
Sure.
So?
Or I could.
Okay, so we have a motion by Laurel, a second by Mike, excuse me, a motion by Trustee Crossman, a second by Trustee Walker. I wasn't expected to lead this. I forgot my protocol there, but I can call for a vote, and then we'll take questions.
Yeah, public comment.
Yeah.
Public comment.
Okay. Sorry, call for a vote first, and then I go to public comment?
No.
Public comment first.
You've actually closed the public comment on this item, so you're good.
We're good there.
Call the question and.
Okay. I thought so. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So do we have, did you get that counted, or should we?
No.
Oh. Well, let's, um.
Do we go individual?
Why don't we do a roll call? Let's, so I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to recall a, or I'm going to reissue a vote, and we're going to do it in roll call style, so I'll start with Don.
No.
Stacy?
Nay.
Richard?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
And Trustee Ramirez?
Aye.
And my vote will be no. So we had?
Four to three.
Yeah. So the vote was four to three in favor, so the motion passes. Do we have any additional board comment?
Only that we're all on board, and we'll help whatever we need to do to make this hybrid method work.
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, despite my vote, I'm really in favor of getting kids back to school. I just have some concerns, and I appreciate the vote, and I support the vote as a board. And I thank everybody for their thorough research and deliberation and thoughts on the matter, as well as the public. And, Don, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have a month. Maybe COVID cases will be going downward in a month. We can only hope, right?
Vaccination.
That is what we don't know, and, and I am aware of that with going forward with this. But I think, I, I mean, and, and honestly, I think the governor could make a change day to day. I don't know what he's going to say with things. So, but I, for me, it comes down to the kids. And, and I just feel like if we have to go remote, we'll be more successful in that model if they have even two weeks of, of, of being in the classroom.
And we strongly suggest that the sooner, the better for staff to get the stuff out to our, our staff and let them know how safe they're going to be and the protocols and what happens under this, and that as soon as we can to get those fears re, underlined, or lessened, sorry, it's getting late, lessening the fear, and working on our confidence for our, our staff.
So, Rich?
or lessened, sorry, it's getting late, lessening the fear and working on our confidence for our, our staff.
So Rich?
If we see this dramatic spike in cases in this next month, is there a possibility of, I guess, for lack of a term, switching over to the remote learning model?
Trustee Varner, I think to do that, we would need to have a special meeting of the board or meet during a time when the board would have its regular meeting and have that as an agenda item. So it usually takes us three days to post a meeting and to go through the process of agendizing and creating the backup materials for the meeting to occur. But I don't think there's anything that prevents us from doing that.
Would that have to be approved by Department of Education then?
No, I don't believe so, because what we will be submitting is our 100% remote learning process anyway, as part of that. So that was really part of their goal in requiring school districts to go through this process. They wanted to know that if schools closed again, we had a way to teach students, even if it were remotely.
I just, to wrap this item up, I just want to thank everybody on public and board and Mr. Stokes and his staff. Again, I think it was really good work by everybody. It was a well-thought-out plan, whether we agreed, you know, on how we reopen or not. I think it was a well-thought-out plan with a lot of hard work, so I appreciate everybody's effort. And I'm sure we're going to be getting emails from the public, you know, to letting us know how they feel, and that's fine, and we welcome that, but, you know, I hope everybody understands what a challenging decision this was for everybody. So thank you. And with that, I will now turn the meeting back over to President Walker.
Thank you. So next item on the agenda is item number nine, discussion and possible action to revise the 2020-2021 academic calendar for the Carson City School District, including recommendation to move the start date of school for students from August 17th, 2020 to August 24th, 2020. This is for possible action. Ms. Fuson.
Thank you, President Walker, Tasha Fuson for the record. So in alignment with our reopening plan, we have put in front of you a revised calendar for 2021. One of the main items on that calendar is to assign the first five days of the school year as professional learning days. So one thing that could be somewhat confusing is we're not actually changing the first day of school. The first day of school technically remains August 17th. It's simply that the first five days are professional learning days. So as you're looking at your revised calendar, you'll see a TT that designates teacher training on the 12th, August 12th, 13th, and 14th. Teacher training does not count as student contact time as per Nevada Administrative Code. So that's why it's designated differently, where our professional learning days, professional development days do count as student contact time. So again, it's a little, it's kind of an odd thing, but technically, the first day of school remains the same, the last day of school remains the same, it's simply that our school years start with five professional learning days for teachers. We have then also removed all other professional learning days from the calendar. So we had assigned previously in our, in our calendar, we had September 28th, February 1st, and April 19th, I believe, as designated professional learning days. We have removed those. Our calendar is required to be 180 days, and one of the, the new pieces that the Department of Education had allowed is for districts to use 10 days for professional learning. We are only using five, simply because what our hybrid model looks like is having that additional time on Mondays for half of that day for, for teachers to work in teacher teams while students are working remotely. So we felt that there was not the necessity to have additional professional learning days throughout the day, throughout the year. We've also removed all early release days for the same reason, right? So Mondays being the day for that, that PLC time and the ability for additional team preparation time for remote learning. In addition, because of conversations during our reopening committee, there was mentioned by several of our members that it seemed odd to have school on Thanksgiving week only on a Tuesday. So with Monday being the remote day and then a Tuesday being an in-person day, and we already had Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday off, what we did is we removed two of the random non-school days that we had put in second semester in February and March. We moved those to Thanksgiving week. So in this new proposed calendar, all students and teachers would have Thanksgiving week completely off. So that is a major change you see in there. In essence, those are really, you know, the changes that you see, the calendar looks much cleaner. Obviously, if you looked at the calendar that we currently have with all of the symbols, et cetera, it's gone to a pretty straightforward calendar now. I know there was a comment about why do we not have Wednesdays as our, as our, that team day, that, that homeroom day. Really, that came down to the fact that we looked at the calendar, Mondays has the most holidays throughout the year. I mean, that's all, that's really what it was, is we looked at it and said, there's more Monday holidays, so we don't want a revolving calendar, a rotating A-B schedule-type calendar, so what day is, you know, that would make the most sense to use that day.
And one of the things I talked about, Mr. Stokes, about that, it doesn't matter what day you pick, you're going to have people that say it wasn't the best day to pick. So I mean, you just have to pick a day.
Absolutely, absolutely. So yes, we're, we're requesting that you approve this calendar, so it is an action item, and then we will be submitting, so you know, a revision to the Department of Education to our, to our proposed calendar.
Tasha, just so I'm clear, on the agenda we had, the packet we, we received, we had, there was a proposal on that for pre-K and K to start a week later on the 31st. That now is not the case, everybody's starting the same day?
So, so pre-K, we are requesting that they start a week later. We still had some unanswered questions about Kinder that we've been waiting for from the Department of Education in terms of what are our parameters for operating kindergarten? And so that's why that's, that stands as is. Our Kinder teachers had asked also for the time for that to be moved back for a week. I mean, I guess, ask for some flexibility when it comes to pre-K and K, simply until we can get, you know, those, those questions answered from the Department of Education. But that's why what our teachers would like for kindergarten, for kindergarten is for kindergarten to start at the same time on August 31st, 31st with student contact with students. That's what they're asking for, but we wanted to make sure that we meet the requirements of the Department of Education before we could make that commitment.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure I was clear. Thank you.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the revised 2020-2021 academic calendar as submitted to include changing the start date for students from August 17th, 2020 to August 24th, 2020.
Second. We have a motion by Richard, a second by Dawn. Any further discussion from the board?
Just a purely personal thing, I'm okay if we move graduation a little later, because the RTO was canceled this year, and they moved it next year to the 4th and the 5th, and my senior will be running it that morning, finishing, we think we can get done in Virginia City and back in time for graduation, but if we need five more days and need to miss graduation, I'd be okay with that, too.
Otherwise, the Crossmans will become sweaty.
We'll be sweaty, but we'll be there.
That's okay.
The RTO is important, I will give you that.
So I'd like to open it up, any public comment on this item?
We have, we do have public comment from Brittany Kinder. Brittany, you are unmuted, please state your name for the record. Brittany, you may need to unmute yourself.
Brittany, it should be on the bottom left-hand corner of the screen. One, once, twice.
Hearing no response from Brittany, and she has lowered her hand.
Okay. Renee, any email? No problem.
I got to tell you, that tip was handy, because I always look for that thing in it when you're in a rush.
Okay, seen none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10 on the agenda, approval of consent agenda, this is for possible action.
I'll make a motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I have a motion by Dawn, second by Joe. Any discussion from the board?
I just have a question. On the number F, the approval of the quarterly discipline data report, what dates are those? Is this the January through March? Because there's no dates.
That report, I'm sorry, is an annual report, so that's for the entire year.
So this is the annual report?
Correct.
So how come we don't have the expulsion on here?
The expulsion? There is not...
And expulsion, and it's not on the, the data?
I will have to research that and get back to you, I'm not sure I didn't show up on the data.
Carson Middle, that we... Carson High School. Ryan will remember.
I remember.
Mike remembers.
Thank you for, for noticing that, Trustee Wilkie. I'll make sure I investigate that and find out why it didn't show up when we pulled the data.
All right. Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
Seen no public comment.
All right, seen none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 11, emotional, informational items, which obviously we don't have any. Item number 12, request for future agenda topics. Do we have any requests? Dawn?
I think, Mr. Feeling, you're going to be coming back, I take it, with budget as soon as we know what the numbers look like, or a little bit, is that, and especially, I guess SB 178, was a little concerned about that. Am I, am I wrong to think that's the money for English learners and free and reduced lunch? Is that what's covered there?
It, it is, yes.
Yeah, I'd love to know the impact if we don't get that money back.
Sure. Yeah, we can...
People keep asking me about the Snyder property, so...
That would give us more square footage, just saying, if we need to space classes out, I, that would be something.
Maybe if we could just have, I mean, that could even be in a superintendent's report if you want.
I had intended to bring that to the board probably mid-October. I did speak with John Uheart recently, who said they're still very interested in continuing our discussions. So at your request, I can bring that back at any time.
I guess the, one of the things, if we do bring it back, it would be nice to know what our costs would be just to maintain it, even if we don't use it right now, what, what our regular monthly cost would be to, to keep that building, especially with our budget issues.
All right. With that, I will adjourn the meeting at, what is it, 10:55? Thank you, everyone.